Thank you for coming. For the past three months, Fight for Schools has fielded a volunteer army to collect signatures to remove six school board members. An event that was triggered by their participation in a private Facebook group that plotted against over sixty Loudoun County parents. But also during that time, we have diligently investigated the activities of one of those school board members, whose behavior has gone so far beyond the pale of what is accepted of an elected official in this country. So today, we have filed our petition to remove Leesburg Representative Beth Bartz from office as a Loudoun County School Board member. We have collected one thousand eight hundred and sixty signatures, well above the required amount of one thousand one hundred and seventy-six. And quite frankly, it is difficult to believe that Ms. Bartz has been a member of the Loudoun County School Board for less than two years, given the sheer amount of controversy that she has single-handedly generated in that short time. And we will detail that here today. And make no mistake, we are not seeking to remove Ms. Bartz for her policies. We are seeking to remove her for the way she defends those policies, by consistently breaking the rules, violating the law, making a mockery of her oath of office and the school board's code of conduct, and attacking her colleagues and members of the community who exercise their right to disagree. The litany of charges will come as no surprise to the members of the community and Ms. Bartz's colleagues on the school board. Now, among the laws applicable to this removal action are the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Loudoun County Ordinance 25304, and the Loudoun County School Board Code of Conduct. I'm going to detail them as quickly as I can and get into the facts here. Virginia Freedom of Information Act was enacted to ensure the people of the Commonwealth ready access to public records in the custody of a public body or its officers and employees. Courts are required to liberally construe the statute to promote an increased awareness by all persons of government activities and afford every opportunity of citizens to witness the operations of government. Exemptions to FOIA are therefore narrowly construed. It was enacted to ensure that the people of the Commonwealth could understand what their government is doing. It allows public bodies to hold closed, non-public meetings for certain defined purposes, most of which concern the protection of individual privacy. If a given scenario does not fit with one of those enumerated exemptions, then a closed meeting to discuss such matters is prohibited. Now, members of a public body are also authorized to meet at a public forum, candidate appearance, or debate, or at any other place or function where no part of the purpose of such gathering is the discussion or transaction of any business. Now, Loudoun County also has its own laws governing the conduct of local officials, like school board members, including an ordinance prohibiting the misuse of public assets. The provision holds in relevant part that no elected official of the county without lawful authorization shall use public assets for private or personal purposes unrelated to the duties and office of such, elected official or any other legitimate government interest when the value of such use exceeds one thousand dollars in any twelve-month period. Finally, the Loudoun County School Board has its own code of conduct that all members are obligated to follow. It's called LCPS Policy 1030. 1030a2, that the public expects my first and greatest concern to be in the best interest of each and every one of these young people, without distinction as to who they are or what their background may be. 1030b4, to respect the stated purpose for and maintain the confidentiality of discussions that are held pursuant to the Code of Virginia as closed meetings or executive sessions. 1030b3, to show respect for and work with my fellow board members and staff in a spirit of harmony and cooperation, in spite of differences of opinion that arise during vigorous debates of points at issue. Finally, 1030b10, to strive step by step toward ideal conditions for most effective school board service to my community, in a spirit of teamwork and devotion to public education as the greatest instrument for the preservation of perpetuation of our representative democracy. And I skipped one, and this is important. 1030b9, to welcome and encourage active cooperation by Loudoun County residents, organizations, and the media of communication in the district with respect to establishing policy on current school operations and proposed future developments. Now, the following is a breakdown of Ms. Bartz's behavior from the time she took office until before, just before, the list that occurred in March. Let's start in March. Uh, I'm sorry, before March. On June 2nd, 2020, the board met to discuss the performance or discipline of a specific public officer, Beth Bartz. That was the first of five closed sessions to address Ms. Bartz's public conduct. On June 20th, School Board Chair Vice Chair Atu Serezer noted that the board had offered legal advice to Mrs. Bartz to stop her from, quote, "sharing unverified information that creates a liability." This was in reference to Bartz's standard practice of sharing confidential information from closed sessions publicly on social media, in violation of Policy 1030b4's requirement that all board members protect the confidentiality of those discussions. Vice Chair Serezer's notes indicate that Bartz's violation of the board's confidentiality policy was not only, was not the only activity causing concern among her colleagues during the summer of 2020. They were also troubled by her apparent ignorance of Virginia's FOIA requirements concerning open meetings and the preservation of public records. On July 21st, 2020, the board was again forced to provide legal advice to Mrs. Bartz concerning not deleting comments or emailing multiple board members simultaneously to decide issues, a regular practice of Ms. Bartz, which violated the state law requiring public business to be discussed in public meetings unless subject to a statutory exemption. Apparently Bartz did not get the message despite repeated board interventions. On October 10th, 2020, Bartz posted in the private Loudoun for Evidence-Based Safe and Equitable Schooling Facebook group to discuss school board distance learning policies. She proceeded to engage with members of the group and answer constituent questions concerning the policy. Upon information and belief, these private Facebook groups are definition not open to the public. A quest for admissions must be approved by the moderator of the group, and six other school board members were in this private group. Pursuant to LCPS Policy 1040b, a majority of the members shall constitute a quorum for the purposes of a meeting. Hence, the participation of seven of nine members in this private group, a clear majority, qualified the group as a closed meeting of the board, and Bartz's discussion of non-exempt public business with members of the group constituted a violation of Section 2.23711's closed meeting requirements. On December 30th, 2020, former school board member Debbie Rose emailed LCPS Division Counsel Stephen DeVita to notify him that Ms. Bartz was using her personal Facebook page to discuss public business in the private Evidence-Based Group. Ms. Rose correctly recognized that Bartz was improperly using her personal Facebook account under the mistaken assumption that this exempted any comments she posted from FOIA public records preservation requirements, when in fact she was openly using the personal account to discuss public business in groups where public access to her comments were restricted. As evidence for this claim, Ms. Rose provided a screenshot of Bartz claiming that she was speaking as a member of LCPS School Board while using her personal Facebook page in that group. Now, fast forward to November 1st, 2020, a different Loudoun County resident messaged a moderator for one of these groups in which Bartz regularly engaged. The moderator responded, "I can't prevent her from deleting her own comments." This is an acknowledgement that Bartz repeatedly deleted posts and comments that should have been preserved as public records, open to the citizens of the Commonwealth under FOIA. After no change in Ms. Bartz's online activity, Ms. Rose emailed LCPS Superintendent and Board Chair on November 6th to notify them that Bartz was evading Virginia Open Meeting laws by using her personal Facebook page to comment on board business in a variety of private forums. In other words, Ms. Bartz deliberately evaded FOIA requirements by using her personal account to opine in her official capacity on school board business in Facebook groups that were not open to the public. She also made a practice of deleting her comments, i.e. destroying public records, whenever she received a negative response from others. This is a clear violation of FOIA's mandate that all public records shall be open to all citizens of the Commonwealth. Because Bartz deleted her posts without making any attempt at preservation, we are not, we do not have access to those. On the same day, Bartz posted an update to her official School Board Facebook page announcing that her previous official page and all of the posts and comments associated with that page had been archived and is not coming back. Bartz specifically noted that this announcement was made, quote, "for anyone who is trying to FOIA my old page," indicating that she did understand her Facebook comments constituted public records and that she deleted her official page despite that understanding. That demonstrates a knowing and willful violation of the law. Of course, she was no more diligent in observing her duty to preserve public records on other social media platforms. As recently as November 2020, she maintained a Twitter account which she used to post about school business. That Twitter account has since been deleted, and yet another violation of the law. Now, on November 17th, 2020, the board finally took action to address Ms. Bartz's erratic conduct. The board formally reprimanded her in response to the evidence that Bartz had disclosed confidential attorney-client privileged information that was shared in a closed session of the board without authorization. The motion to reprimand Bartz passed 6-2, with Bartz absent and not voting. On November 30th, 2020, a Loudoun County resident emailed the superintendent and board chair to complain about Ms. Bartz's fear-mongering public remarks online concerning the dangers of school reopening. The constituent explained that Bartz, quote, "now has parents on social media freaking out that doctors are saying their kids and the teacher will be dead if they return to school." Concerningly, they also reported that Bartz is, quote, "encouraging people to call her so that info cannot be FOIA'd." The next day, on December 20th, the board was again forced to address Ms. Bartz's unprofessional behavior, only two weeks after her formal reprimand. This time, the issue was Bartz's threat to hold a solo press conference to demand that Loudoun County Public Schools return to remote learning. Board Chair Brenda Sheridan said that, quote, "a press conference by one individual would be highly inappropriate," and that, quote, "the threats must stop now," end quote. The ultimatum was, yet again, a clear violation of Ms. Bartz's duty under LCPS Policy 1030b3 to show respect for and work with her fellow board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation. In response to a perceptive constituent question as to whether membership of seven of the board members in a private Facebook group constituted a violation of open meetings laws, Bartz incorrectly claimed that an open meeting resulted when more than two elected representatives are having a conversation in real time on social media or in person about school business. That is incorrect. A gathering of board members constitutes a meeting for the purposes of FOIA when at least three members are involved in a gathering where part of the purpose of such gathering is the discussion or transaction of any business. As previously explained, seven members of the board, a clear majority, and a quorum were members of the private Facebook group in question. The group describes itself as "a group for Loudoun County Public School parents, teachers, staff, and policymakers to discuss local education issues." Therefore, the group expressly holds itself out as a private forum for the discussion of public business. Participation in such group by three or board members is therefore flatly impermissible under the law. Now, even if Ms. Bartz's understanding of the law was correct, it is not true that no more than two elected officials have discussed public business in that group. For example, on one occasion, a school board member tagged six of his colleagues in a comment, asking for their thoughts on feedback from LCPS teachers, thereby openly conducting public business in a private forum. Ms. Bartz has also used her social media accounts to misrepresent to the general public the policy positions of her colleagues on the board. On December 2nd, 2020, Ms. Bartz shared a post on her official School Board Facebook account that omitted key information concerning a proposal by school board member Jeff Morse that would have required students to keep cameras on during class. Ms. Bartz did not communicate that Mr. Morse would have allowed students to opt out of this policy, and she still solicited public comment on this proposal via Facebook, saying that "I would like to hear thoughts on this from the community." Mr. Morse texted Ms. Bartz to complain about her actions, saying, quote, "Can you see the frenzy you just created? Beth, this is so unnecessary. You have created angst beyond belief the way you have phrased this." Again, a violation of her obligations under the Code of Conduct. Now, Ms. Bartz has also, as we've talked about, frequently shared confidential information from closed board meetings in order to stir up anger against her colleagues, and in particular has repeatedly targeted her fellow school board member John Beatty. On January 5th, 2021, Ms. Bartz shared information in a private Facebook group concerning Mr. Beatty's actions in a closed meeting. Bartz did not have board authorization to share this confidential information, and had been repeatedly warned about the consequences of unauthorized disclosure. Nevertheless, she attacked Member Beatty using her official Facebook page on February 24th, both disclosing confidential information and gratuitously highlighting a prior controversy in an effort to stroke public ire against her colleague. Now, Ms. Bartz's online harassment has not been confined to her colleagues on the school board, but has even extended to other Loudoun County officials. On January 17th, 2021, Bartz posted a screenshot of a private Facebook group from Phyllis Randle, Chair of the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors, advocating for school reopening. Bartz denigrated Ms. Randle's sincerely expressed concerns and indicated that she did not take them seriously. By seeking out a member of the community for public ridicule, she once again violated her obligation under LCPS Policy 1030b9 to welcome and encourage active cooperation by Loudoun County residents. She also shared private correspondence from constituents and LCPS to hold these private citizens out for online ridicule. On January 31st, Bartz shared the text of an email on her personal Facebook page in which a constituent had expressed concerns over school reopening policies, thereby effectively inviting her followers to ridicule and attack community members who shared similar concerns. This constituent subsequently emailed Bartz to complain that, quote, "sharing emails from a parent in a public forum where no one can reply and bashing me is completely appalling and unbecoming of an elected official." Again, this policy violated the Code of Conduct. Now, by early 2020, as Ms. Bartz's behavior began to affect her colleagues' ability to do their own work, their patience wore thin. On January 11th, 2021, Bartz posted a message concerning an earlier removal effort on her official Facebook page, and asked voters who want to continue to represent our community to email her official School Board email address with messages of support. For some reason, Bartz also forwarded many of these emails to Chair Sheridan and Vice Chair Serezer. Vice Chair Serezer's private notes indicate that she was not only annoyed by this conduct, but considered the, quote, "copying of Serezer's LCPS email on her messages related to the political recall effort to be a, quote, 'misuse of Serezer's time and a misuse of a division resource.'" After failing to convince Bartz to cease this practice by repeated private interventions, Serezer emailed the full board to complain that Bartz forwarding of supportive constituent emails to other members of the board was distracting and unnecessary. She claimed that Bartz's incessant forwarding of praise from constituents was impacting my ability to do my work, and noted that this was her fourth request for Ms. Bartz to stop harassing her. Eventually, this practice of forwarding irrelevant emails to her colleagues, even after Vice Chair Serezer repeatedly asked her to stop, became so distracting that the board was forced to hold yet another closed meeting on February 9th, 2021, to address the problems. By asking constituents to email her official address concerning a political matter, and then forwarding those emails to her board colleagues, Bartz twice violated Loudoun County's ordinance criminalizing the misuse of public assets. After months of unceasing, unprofessional behavior from Ms. Bartz, the board finally censured her at its meeting on March 4th, 2021 by a 7-0 vote. The board cited four separate provisions of School Board Policy 1030: failure to put student interests first; failure to show respect for fellow board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation; failure to welcome and encourage active cooperation of Loudoun County residents in the district; and failure to work in a spirit of teamwork and service to the community. When introducing the censure motion, Board Chair Sheridan explained that it was not a reaction to one event, but rather a, quote, "response to a culmination of behaviors over the last fourteen months." Vice Chair Serezer added that the censure, quote, "has only to do with your own misconduct," end quote. And Member Ian Sorokin expressed that he felt the censure was warranted because, quote, "nothing else we've tried has worked." Clearly, by March 2021, Ms. Bartz's unprofessional behavior had escalated to the point that the full board felt obligated to publicly punish her. Unsurprisingly, Ms. Bartz was not dissuaded from her aggressive course of conduct. Rather than responding to formal censure by the full board with contrition, she shared an unapologetic statement from her attorney criticizing the judgment of her fellow board members. The next week, Chair Sheridan stripped her of her committee assignments. Ms. Bartz did not cease her unacceptable behavior in March 2021. Instead, her harassment of her colleagues and of private citizens in Loudoun County has only escalated. On March 11th, only days after her formal censure by the board, Bartz joined yet another private Facebook group, the Anti-Racist Parents of Loudoun County. In addition to Bartz, this private Facebook group, which exists for the purpose of discussing LCPS equity policies, included five other school board members, thus a quorum and making it a meeting under FOIA. A March 12th, 2021 post from Bartz in the private Facebook group alerted the group's members to the existence of a movement of LCPS parents who are opposed to the teaching of critical race theory in Loudoun County Public Schools. Members of this anti-racist group responded in an extraordinarily aggressive fashion. One member commented on Bartz's post to ask members to gather information on the individuals involved, infiltrate their group, and expose these people publicly, even suggesting hacking their websites. A second member of the group responded to Bartz's post by asking people to comment below with legal names, legal names, of these individuals, area of residence, or school board rep, known accounts on social media, and any other info you feel is relevant. They also wanted to look through your HOA records and tax assessor records. These posts ultimately prompted an investigation by the sheriff's office. On March 24th, 2021, Bartz was interviewed by law enforcement and told them that, after her initial post, she did not return to the group until the next morning. That statement was false. She commented numerous times following her initial post, and even posted a message thanking everybody in the group for their advocacy. She also deleted one of her comments at some point before being interviewed, and once again violated her FOIA obligation to preserve records created in her official capacity as a board member. On March 26th, 2021, shortly after being interviewed by law enforcement concerning her activity in the private Facebook group, Bartz, showing no remorse, shared a post on both her official and personal Facebook pages from LCPS Minority Student Achievement Advisory Committee that read in part, quote, "We can and will silence the opposition." Not only was this a clear threat to Loudoun County parents who would express concern over LCPS's equity policies, but Bartz later deleted this post on both pages in yet another violation of her FOIA obligation to preserve records created in her official capacity. On May 26th, 21, even after a board vote on a resolution recognizing LGBTQ Month, Ms. Bartz emailed her board colleagues to express her dissatisfaction with some of their votes, and then blind copied several interest groups that supported the resolution. Not only was this yet another example of Bartz's flagrant disregard for the confidentiality of deliberations in closed board meetings, but it also contained a threat of public retaliation. Quote, "I encourage you to have an answer ready for your constituents, who are advocates and allies of our LGBTQ families. I have absolutely no doubt they will be coming for it," end quote. Board member Harris Medevi expressed in a subsequent email to a constituent that he was afraid to work towards a modification of the resolution because Bartz's conduct would lead him to believe that, quote, "he would not have been heard," and that she was a toxic school board member. Again, a violation of the Code of Conduct to show respect for and work with fellow board members and staff in a spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during vigorous debate of points at issue. Now, the anti-racist group of which Ms. Bartz remains a member has been a hotbed of coordinated campaigns, not just against parents, but also teachers who express unpopular political views. On June 1st, one member posted in the group to encourage members to call Leesburg Elementary School to complain about teacher Tanner Cross, who had been the subject of public attention after he delivered a speech at a board meeting concerning the use of gender pronouns, explaining that they had received a confidential tip that, quote, "disruption of school activities due to his employment can help keep Cross on leave," end quote. Shortly thereafter, on June 3rd, Bartz posted again in her Leesburg outreach page to say, quote, "Thank you. I appreciate everyone who took action today. #Leesburg." Finally, wrapping up the allegations or what we have, on August 5th, the board was again forced to consult with legal counsel in a closed meeting for a sixth time concerning, quote, "specific legal matters pertaining to board members involving social media and advisory groups," a clear reference to the problems that Bartz's ongoing recalcitrant conduct online has caused for the ability of the board to conduct normal operations. On August 7th, 2021, Bartz again posted from her personal account in the private Evidence-Based Group to request feedback on proposed LCPS dress code violations, yet another example of how she is using personal social media accounts in private forums to discuss public business despite being repeatedly informed that this is against the law. And lastly, at the board's most recent meeting on August 13th, board member Jeff Morse expressed concern over harassment campaigns that had been undertaken in private Facebook groups and tacitly supported by incumbent board members. He said, quote, "It is divisive when a Facebook group starts a hit list against their own community members, asking for information on spouses, on jobs, information on children of their neighbors so that they can plot against them. And when school board members in that Facebook group don't have the courage to stand here on the dais, apologize to the community members that were flagged, unequivocally denounce the attacks, and condemn the community members who participated, then the community is left in a very dangerous place." Now, in addition to the petitions, we also filed a motion to seal. I want to address that briefly. We filed a motion to seal all personally identifiable information contained in the petition from public disclosure. Now, Virginia courts are authorized to do that under certain circumstances, and we believe that it has merited here. An evaluation of the law decisively supports our interest in keeping the legal names and addresses of the petitioners private. While we understand that, and petitioners understand, that annoyance and criticism can often result from being a party to litigation, the harassment already suffered by citizens involved in this removal effort goes far beyond mere annoyance and criticism. The photos and full names of some petitioners were shared in a private Facebook group where they were attacked as racists. Leaders of this removal effort have received hate mail at their homes, and opponents of removal even sent a flyer to one woman's employer branding her as a, quote, "active racist" in an attempt to get her fired. More worryingly, there's been, already been, an effort in the Anti-Racist Parents Group to compile a list of individuals opposed to Beth Bartz's policy goals, including collecting personally identifiable information such as residential addresses and the names of minor children. The risk of retaliatory harm remains particularly high because petitioners reside in the neighborhoods of some of the most vociferous opponents of this removal effort. Individuals involved with gathering signatures have already been subject to obscene gestures from their neighborhoods, from their neighbors while out in the street. Tensions have risen so high that many petitioners feel unsafe publicly sharing their opinions on pressing community issues. And upon information and belief, other citizens, including LCPS staff, has declined to sign the petition despite wanting to because of fear of suffering backlash from Ms. Bartz and her allies. Although petitioners themselves are all over the age of eighteen, they are naturally worried about the safety of their minor children in the volatile political environment that currently exists in Loudoun County, due in large part to Beth Bartz. Furthermore, the sealing of the petitioner's name would not result in any harm to Ms. Bartz. She can still review the petitions. Finally, we've also filed a motion for the Commonwealth's attorney to be recused and an independent prosecutor to be appointed by the court. Before I focus on that, I would like to call up Zia Tompkins from Open FCPs because he can speak a little bit about the process and what happened to the Fairfax County parents last week.
Thank you so much for coming out today, and hope the Open FCPs Coalition proudly stands shoulder to shoulder with the parents here in Loudoun County as they seek accountability from their school board. I really want to relay to you guys that what you see here is the tip of an iceberg. And as we all know, most icebergs lie beneath the surface from which you can't see. Whether you're talking about one thousand signatures, five thousand signatures, or ten thousand signatures in the case of Fairfax County, you're only getting a glimpse of the depth of anger that is felt by parents across Northern Virginia at the way that their schools have been managed and the oversight provided by their elected representatives. Now, as we congratulate the parents and teachers and students and all the people here in Loudoun County as they proceed in this milestone to the next step, we also want to caution the example that we face in Fairfax County. Fact of matter is, all of us are trapped in a broken recall system. While we were able to collect the necessary signatures and go to court, our case ultimately was thrown out. And it was thrown out because of our inability to represent ourselves. The way Commonwealth law is written, a Commonwealth attorney must be appointed to represent these petitioners as they go to court, and is subject to the political machine that's kept us all trapped in this system. Commonwealth attorney from Fairfax County, Mr. Descano, recused himself, not only because he took money from Miss Stolen, the school board member that we were attempting to recall, but because he also took money from the very same political machine that represents the school itself, the school system, and its other elected representatives. However, he did not leave without a parting gift. He selected a handpicked Commonwealth attorney, who, as we found out afterward, was also a school board member himself, and who also accepted money from the same PAC that Mr. Descano did, in order to undermine our case. in order to undermine our case. Despite all of our best efforts in good faith to believe that this Commonwealth's attorney would fairly represent the interests of the people of Fairfax County and these petitioners, we were betrayed at the last moment in open court in what I have to describe as the most surreal event I've ever seen. We were being argued against by both sides of the aisle, by their defense attorney representing Miss Stolen and by our own Commonwealth's attorney in what must be seen as the most naked political abuse I have ever witnessed. This process is broken and extends beyond just the school board, impacting any and every elected office here in this Commonwealth. As citizens of the Commonwealth, we have every reason to be afraid. This system must change, and it begins here. So while I want to thank everyone here and I want to thank the parents of Loudoun as they continue forward, I also want to wish them good hunting, because quite honestly, the fight really only begins now. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Zia. And so, as I said, to guard against what happened in Fairfax, we are filing a motion for Commonwealth Attorney Buddha Bibirai to be recused and for the court to appoint an independent, nonpartisan prosecutor on the grounds that our Commonwealth attorney cannot be impartial. There's compelling evidence of that, that she will not serve the petitioner's interest in removing Beth Bart's from office and in fact is actively opposed to the success of this petition. For example, just two weeks ago, Bibirai shared a Loudoun Now opinion piece on her Twitter account that criticized Fight for Schools by name. That op-ed alleged that the petitioners have fabricated charges against members of the school board and erroneously claimed that the same petitioners involved in the Bart's removal effort are also circulating petitions supporting the removal of Ms. Bibirai. They are not. Even though some Loudoun County people and individuals have signed and circulated petitions, there are efforts being undertaken by different groups. Moreover, according to an email sent by Beth Bart's to a constituent in December 2020, she is personal friends with the incumbent Loudoun County Commonwealth's attorney. Lastly, one piece of the circulated petition by Stand Up Virginia seeking to remove Ms. Bibirai is her very participation in the Anti-Racist Parent Group, which is central to what we are talking about here. So it is imperative for the court, not Attorney Bibirai herself, to appoint an independent counsel who can vigorously prosecute this case. This must be done by the book. This is not the case. This is not the school board member. This is not the hill where trust in government and the rule of law should die. To close out, for five months, Loudoun County has been at the center of local, state, national, and even international media attention. Much of this is due to the action of Ms. Bart's. Our detractors claim that our efforts are political, a way to help candidates win elections, that we would never file, that we would time our filing to coincide with the November election. They were trying to overturn an election, that this was to make money. Mr. King over there, who represents Ms. Bart's, claimed that "I'm unemployed," false. Claimed that "I paid rioters at a school board meeting," false. Hopefully, he's not speaking in his capacity as her lawyer, because that could be a problem as well. Pick an accusation, Ms. Bart's and her allies have made it, and they are all categorically false. This is about holding our government officials accountable that have no respect for the rule of law, especially when their position involves a supervisory role over the very schools that we send our children to. She has flagrantly and repeatedly violated public records law and multiple policies of the Loudoun County School Board and encouraged online harassment campaigns of community members and her own colleagues who object to her policy goals. Her behavior has been so extreme that she has been repeatedly disciplined by her colleagues on the board, first reprimanded, then censured, and finally stripped of her committee assignments. None of these actions have sufficed to compel Bart's to comply with school board policies or conform her actions to state law. And as Mr. King himself said in an article recently, "The removal statute is not about removing people whose policies you don't like." We agree. Again, we are not seeking to remove Ms. Bart's for her policies. We are seeking to remove her for the way she defends those policies, by continually breaking the rules, breaking the law, attacking parents, attacking her colleagues. Therefore, the only option remaining to the residents of the Leesburg District is to respectfully request that the court remove Ms. Bart's from office for neglect of duty, misuse of office, and incompetence in the performance of her duties. It is long past time that the Leesburg District had competent representation on the school board, a return to normal board operations focused only on the best interests of Loudoun County students and unimpeded by Ms. Bart's repeated violations of the law and board policies. Will the rule of law and the accountability of abusive public officials be our legacy? Or will it be politics, winks, and backroom deals, all to save one school board member because of her political affiliation? Based on what we've seen on the coverage of Loudoun County, the whole world is watching. Thank you.
As you well know, as you and I have talked about it, recall campaigns historically are very, very unsuccessful. I think there's really only been one for the reasons that you are filing against Ms. Bart's. Why is this going to be the second one in all of Virginia history to be successful?
Well, I think what you have is a situation where her actions have not only impacted the board, but have really destroyed the community and created a divisive situation that is impacting the education system in Loudoun County Public Schools. I would also say that, you know, unlike some of these other cases, the school board went up to the limit of their powers in what they could do to discipline her. In fact, there was an email to Chairwoman Sheridan in April asking, "How do you remove Beth Bart's from the board?" And Sheridan, in what seemed to be an implicit hint, said, you know, "A school board, we can only publicly reprimand. We can censure, and I, as chairwoman, can strip someone of their committees. To remove a school board member would require a recall." And so that's from the chairwoman, and that's after, you know, all of this happened. And so I think that if you look at the chronology of events and you look at somebody who, despite repeated punishments from her own colleagues, only doubled down and made matters worse, and if we're ever going to get back to a normal functioning school system, the only way that's going to happen where, you know, at least some consensus can be built is if Ms. Bart's is not on the school board.
You addressed the political allegations here. To that, I mean, Fight for Schools is helping Green Ben Carson here and supporting a Glenn Youngkin campaign. How can you separate the two if that event has happened?
You know, I don't think we really need to. I think that regardless of where you stand on the political aisle, we've had, you know, hundreds of people that are Democrats sign these petitions. We have Democrats on our board. Yes, we receive support from Republicans because they agree with what we're doing publicly. I would say that many Democrats do. They don't necessarily come out and say it. But what you're looking at here, honestly, if it were a Republican that did what Bart's did and we all found ourselves on that list, I think we'd be doing the exact same thing.
So you guys had a ton of signatures. I know that you did go door to door for boards that were strange and not other school board members. How did you verify that folks who signed the petition actually lived within her jurisdiction in other signatures, like I know you did Weyman's or Grover's Square?
Yeah, we had a process in place to ensure that, but ultimately, you know, the court will verify those based on the information. You know, I don't want to get into our internal processes, but, you know, we certainly had a process that we're confident in.
But it will be verified by the driver's license?
All right. Thank you very much.